Call the town council, special town council meeting to order and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. LaBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fays absent, Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Wenigred and Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LaBrow. We will go to number two, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the town council minutes of March 26, 2019, and the public hearing minutes of March 21, 2019 budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I don't know if we have a public, if we have anybody signed up, but you have the ability to speak to anything on the agenda that is not the subject of a public hearing. Oh geez, disappeared again.
What is that?
And you have three minutes to speak. So you state your name and address for the, and what subject you're speaking to, speak into the mic, and it is voice activated. The first person that is, the only person that signed up is Larry Carr.
My, it's just a point of clarification, which is, earlier you were talking about the transfer of a policeman from one fund to another, and you put a cost of $172,000 on that. That surprised me. Maybe you can tell me more about that. Or tell me where to apply.
Yeah, no, no, no. Thank you, but that is unfortunately, it's not a subject of our meeting and all that, but our town manager can actually explain that to you. So if you want to, Matt, you want to explain that while we're moving on? I think we have a couple items we can go through, or I don't know. What, you want to connect?
Now or during the manager's report?
Well, make sure that you will connect at some point.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We will get you an explanation. My, you know, it went away. It went away. Five. Okay. Number five, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of an easement in favor of Eversource Energy.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. O'Leary.
Madam Mayor, we've been fighting printer problems all day, while the distribution they shut, they're still warm.
Microphone, please. Microphone.
What you have is a resolution that came to you some months back. It was tabled because Eversource had some issues that it was working out on its end. This is an easement, a temporary easement, while they construct their power line reliability project, which is essentially running along the busway corridor, the busway slash railway corridor. They need a work area easement from the town. They're not putting any physical structures on town property, but they need to be able to come onto our property, the Brixton Street Public Works facility, while they're working to install structures that are actually just off of our property. They are asking for temporary easement. You have a copy of it in front of you, which was attached to the original resolution. You also have a sketch. This is a working sketch. It is not the actual meets and bounds sketch, but it's essentially it, that shows the rough area that they're, that they are looking for. They have agreed to pay us $3,200 for the use of our property during that period of time, and we would ask you to approve.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions for, Mr. Barnes?
Sure. Mr. O'Leary, I haven't had a chance to take a look at the agreement, but I just want to make sure that it covers all of the required insurance and liability protections for them being on our property, performing this type of work.
I just want to double check it myself, because it's been a while since I read it. You know, I'm not seeing the insurance language here, although I could have sworn it was here, so I'm wondering if I'm looking at an old version. Yeah, let me. If you, the resolution you have in front of you says in substantially the form attached here too. So if you give me a few minutes, I will continue looking while you do other things, and if it's not in here, we will make sure it is before we do an execution copy.
Very good. Thank you.
So just procedurally, we will continue down the agenda, but we can come back to this item without suspending the rules. We can just come back to it.
Well, you could move to adopt. Because the resolution says substantially the form attached here too.
Okay.
I can add that language later. It's not a substantial amendment.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Yes? No? Mr. Carr? No. Any other questions on the easement? Okay. All right. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We will go to 6A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we set for public hearing on May 28, 2019, at 7:15 PM, and refer to TPZ, Draken Crog, an application filed on behalf of 527 Prospect LLC, owner of 527 Prospect Ave., Amendment STD number 123, to permit an approximately 984 square foot two-story addition for expanded office space. Associated landscaping, parking, and drainage improvements are proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 6B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution regarding the Metropolitan District Commission user fee study.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. I'm going to initially start, but I probably will do a little follow-up on this. This is a resolution, and I'm going to have Mr. Hart help with this in a minute, but this is a resolution signed by, I think, the whole council. Might have been one late attendee that we can adjust, but one late signer. But this is something that we, in West Hartford, it's a complicated issue, and we're going to try to summarize it in a way that makes some sense. We actually had a public hearing this afternoon on the budget, and one of the, a lot of comments about, you know, our taxes and taxes going up, our property taxes, there are some things that are being increased at a substantial rate. And one of the things that actually several people mentioned was the MDC, that has about an eight, I think, 8.1% increase, and about $860,000 increase this year, which was our whole grand list growth. So anything else that happened to the budget was eaten up by that one increase. So MDC chart is our Metropolitan District Commission. It is a, our water and sewer provider. And when West Hartford joined the MDC, we joined in the 80, do you remember, Pat? 80?
Eighty-four.
We joined in 84. We, we joined seven other towns, and we, they purchased our, or assumed our sewer liabilities. The structure of the MDC was that they provide water by a user fee, but sewer by something called an ad valorem fee, which is based on, an ad valorem definition, if you look it up in the dictionary, it is a, it is an assessed value. It's your grand list, your assessed values. But the MDC actually does a different kind of an ad valorem system. Their ad valorem system is based on the last three years of property taxes collected, and it's an average of those three years. And those eight-member towns, the total operating budget of the sewer, including capital improvements and, you know, bonding and interest on those bonds, all goes into that bucket, and then it gets divided up between these eight-member towns. And what has happened over the years is that grand lists shift a bit, collection rates shift, and there's been this movement of, of, you know, a distribution that such that West Hartford is actually carrying 20, almost 25%, a little under a quarter of the whole, the whole MDC expense. We suggested, a couple of years, we've been talking about this for a long time, to understand not, not just the fact that it's in our property taxes, and people don't understand that there is this driver in our property tax for the sewer fees that we, they don't see, they don't really know. Many people are surprised it's even in there at all. And there was an argument, I remember talking to some of the people at MDC about it, and there was an argument, oh, well, it's deductible in your taxes. Well, and that has changed as well because of the new tax law. So, so there was this sort of discussion of how, what would it look like if it was a user fee? And interestingly, when we started to look into what other communities do, how this is assessed in other places around the country, we understand that there's very, very few sewer systems that use an ad valorem system, partially because in 1977, the Clean Water Act, ad valorem systems were, there was a moratorium put on ad valorem systems, because there was an understanding that water was a resource, and water in and water out was the full cycle of water that people should pay. So for some reason, the MDC was grandfathered into this ad valorem system, that is a modified ad valorem system, and that over time, those grand lists have changed, and collection rates have changed, and even assessed values have changed. For instance, Hartford has a dual assessed mill rate, uniquely to Connecticut, their residential assessed values are 30%, or ours are 70%. So there was an innate difference. The other thing that other districts have had, or user fee systems have, is a low income rate that the district can adopt in a public way, so that the burden on low-income users, no matter where they live in the district, would be subsidized by the whole district. And that is, we don't have that ability to do that in the existing system. So MDC has been, we've asked a lot of questions. We actually requested that a user fee study be done. It was, there was one done about 25 years ago by what was Cooper's and Lybrand at the time, and the study seemed to, I don't, we had a little information on it when we started asking about it, but obviously it was a very old study, and we requested a new study. We actually had a very wonderful firm that was working on this, and on February 26th, actually, we had a user fee group that actually our town manager was a part of, and our CFO, Peter Privatara, was a part of, or is a part of. And they were analyzing user, not on, there were some estimates, but there was some actual data. But there was a final copy that came out on February 26th, which really actually just triggered some more questions of us and some of the other member towns that I have talked to. So this user fee study, we feel like is not complete. It needs more work to, for us to understand why, why are we, why is this the best way for us to bill in our district? Is this the right way that we should be billing in the district? Is this, how do we explain this to our residents? I just want to explain the magnitude of it for West Hartford. In 2012, our MDC bill was $7.1 million, and 2020, this year, it's $11.5 million. It's more than our fire department, actually well more than our fire department now with our, with revenues, if you netted the two of them together. So it's substantial part of our budget. It's almost two mills. We are unique in that many of our neighboring communities don't have this in their property taxes. And as I said before, many of our residents don't understand what the drivers are to property taxes, and this is a significant driver, one of our largest drivers in the last 10 years, I'd say. So we're, we also know that we have some challenges coming up with, with our stormwater system. MDC has been doing some work. We understand that we have some responsibility. It's very hard for us, when this is built into our property tax system, for us to deploy more resources to help with that, that investment in our, in our community, and we would like to do that in a way that is thoughtful and is responsible, but it's really hard for us to do that now. But one of the imbalances is with the user study, there were many exhibits on different models, and whether, you know, there's an adoption of a partial ad valorem system or a full user system. We believe that a full user fee, like 82, over 80% of the United States use for their sewer systems, is probably the right way to go, because I think most of the ad valorem systems that exist are not inter, in-between towns, they're intra-town, or municipal, or city, that use a consistent method of assessments. And so there's a lot of moving pieces, but I just, I'm, I, we are hopefully going to adopt this, as everybody signed on, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. But our signal is that we need more information and be able to educate our residents on the fact that, you know, this is something that is important to us, it's driving your taxes up, this is something you need to be aware of. It's tying our hands in other areas, as this goes up, it eats up other resources, and it's been a difficult process for us. We have been, Peter and I, and actually Matt, since he came on board, have been going to the budget meetings. Not many towns are there, and we've asked questions, and we've made some progress on what was a 17% increase this year, then was 11% increase, and then ultimately became an 8% increase. But significant, significant pressure on our budget. So, Mr. Hart, anything further? Or Mr. O'Leary, both of you have been very involved in this.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just to add to the mayor's comments. So the study was completed by a group known as Raftellus, and they are experts, they're well-known actually throughout the world. And they looked at six options in total, including this user fee option, which is option C. And really, it's the user fee study, the user fee option, excuse me, that the study finds best meets its evaluation criteria. These criteria include the customer rate impact, equitability, affordability, revenue stability, and the cost and administrative burden. You know, in our view, as the mayor articulated, the reasons for converting to a user fee, we find to be very compelling. First of all, the current ad valorem method, we feel, is really unfair and disproportionate. When you look at the, the impact, property owners, and I'm talking residential property owners here, in every MDC town pays substantially more than the average homeowner in Hartford. So in the seven other towns, they're paying substantially more than the average homeowner in Hartford. And this is because the ad valorem, it's calculated on tax receipts, not on actual use of the service. And the disparity really is greatest here in West Hartford, where our average residential property owner pays two, almost $265 more annually than their counterpart in the city of Hartford. For example, in West Hartford, the average residential property owner is paying $739 a year for this sanitary sewer service versus $475 a year in Hartford. Secondly, we feel as though the user fee really is the most consistent with industry standards and the federal regulations set by the EPA. Raftellus, the consultant itself, notes that the user fee option really is most in line with best practices. It is the most common method across the country. The ad valorem system that we have in place here is actually rare. A third, a third reason that I would cite, and the mayor touched on this too, when we've talked about the user fee option in the past, we've heard concerns from the MDC and others. How would this impact low-income homeowners in particular? You know, if you were to shift from ad valorem to a user fee? Well, actually, the MDC could establish a low-income rate that would benefit low-income users across the entire district, not just in the city, but low-income users in West Hartford, in Windsor, what have you, could also benefit from a low-income rate. The federal regulations specifically permit that. And then the last reason I want to touch on tonight, and then Mr. O'Leary can add any comments if he chooses to, converting to a user fee, as the mayor said, would certainly provide us with some budgetary relief, enhance our economic competitiveness as a, as a region. The ad valorem assessment has increased by 45%, 45% since 2007. And that's in total, system-wide. And shifting to a user fee, so shifting to a user fee would remove a significant fixed cost in our budget, and that would enable us to do some important things. If we removed the fixed cost, obviously, we could provide some tax relief, but we could also consider using a portion of those monies to invest in our stormwater infrastructure, which I think we're all beginning to realize is likely to become a significant cost driver in future years. You know, we've got about 100 miles right now of stormwater infrastructure. Some of it needs to be upgraded, added on to, et cetera. So if we weren't paying this ad valorem tax, we could ostensibly, you could, provide some tax relief, and then for a period of time, even repurpose some of those dollars. So all in all, you know, we think the user fee option makes the most sense, not only for the town of West Hartford, but other member towns across the district as well. The consultant itself noted that the user fee option best meets the study criteria, and in terms of their recommended steps, if the, the group were to decide to focus on the user fee option, the next step would be for the consultant to do a more granular analysis in terms of actual impacts, and then what the MDC would need to do as an organization to make the change.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I just want to also mention that the fact that when Hartford was, was on the, in danger of not being able to make a payment, it did sort of put a tailspin on this eight-member town sort of surety that all member towns were going to pay that money, and how that then would have impacted all other member towns. And that would take this away in addition to all the benefits that Mr. Hart also mentioned. Mr. O'Leary, anything further?
I think the only thing I would add, and I, and I don't mean to offer this as a legal analysis of the regs, more as a, as a practical analysis. If, if you look at the ad valorem system, I think the normal model, and if, if you read the regs and you sort of scratch your head and try to figure out how they were intended to apply, to apply, the normal situation where an ad valorem system was used in 1977, when they stopped being allowed, was a single tax-paying or tax-assessing authority. In other words, the Dallas-Fort Worth Water Pollution Control Authority, where you have one assessor, one assessment system, one grand list, one mill rate, and a portion of that tax is applied as an ad valorem. Here, where you have eight-member towns, each of which assesses separately, values, now theoretically valuation is valuation, but you've got eight different assessors doing valuations, you've got eight different mill rates, you've got eight different tax collection rates, and an ad valorem system that's not based on property value, but based on collection rates, all of those variables fluctuate from year to year. And the, the ad valorem system that is supposed to be proportional across all users, over time, has become less so, increasingly less so. And so that's, that's not a full-throated legal analysis of the regs, but an observation of what I think we started with and how we've gotten here over time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. The one of the analysis that also struck me in the user study was that if we were to snapshot in time this year, and this is, again, I don't know how granular their, their data was, but if we were to this year, just to make a, an adjustment on proportionality, how much use was by each member town, and how that would impact our budget this year? West Hartford would have seen a reduction by over $3 million. So that showed that we're, this has been going on a long time, and there's this disproportional bur, well, burden or responsibility that has been placed on, on the taxpayers of West Hartford, and, and, and right, and on all, on the whole district. And I, that's not a sustainable model, so. Okay, Mr. Carr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't be long, because I agree with everything that's, or even said. I think that you and the town manager and the town attorney have, have very eloquently and very, in a very detailed way, set out the problems with the current system. And I just want to touch on, you know, a few things that really jump out at me, and one thing that I've been saying for a while, is the impact that this has on the competitive, on the economic competitiveness of member towns, because we're required to bear something significant in our mill rate that no other town, I think in Connecticut frankly, is required to bear in their mill rate. And so when folks are looking at property tax burdens in different towns, and they're looking at West Hartford or any other MDC town, one thing that they might not be accounting for is that two of our mills, as you point out, is going towards sewer use. And, you know, also goes to sustainability too, because these increases, they haven't been sort of normalized increases, they've been almost exponential, the way that the MDC costs, costs have been going up. And, you know, it, it brings me to, to something else, which is, and I think it's a core problem of the system, the way that it's currently set up, is that there's a lack of transparency and accountability for the MDC on a political level. And that's because, as you said, you don't see the cost of your sewer services and the extent to which they are going up at what I would say is an abnormal rate. You don't, you don't see that in, because it's in your tax bill. And I think that, you know, if you walk down the street of West Hartford, people know who the mayor is, people know who the other elected officials are, mostly because I think they care about taxes. And obviously a lot about, about a lot of other things. But then there's the, this, this MDC board, where, you know, I challenge anybody, you know, who's not involved in town government to say who the commissioners to the MDC are, or who the governing body of that board is. And yet, they drive so much of the cost factor in town. And so, and so I think that the transparency and accountability is really important, and I think it goes both ways too. It's not just transparency and accountability for the MDC, it's also transparency and accountability for the end user. Because one of the reasons I think that the federal government prefers a consumption-based fee is because, is in an effort to ca, to control causation. They, you know, their users, while you get a water bill, you aren't getting that sewer bill, and you don't realize, and so there's no accountability on the user who might be using more sewer, because they're not seeing the bill that they get for that at the end of the day. And, and, you know, Matt, Matt mentioned it, or the town manager mentioned it, that how out of whack this is with industry best practices. And there was a number that jumped out at me in the report that I just want to highlight, which is that 81% of other sewer utilities in the country have a consumption-based fee. That's how they, they assess, that's how they collect. That's from the Raftellus report, that's from the MDC's own, own report. And 98% of those are a user fee. And it's not as though the remaining 19% use an ad valorem system that looks anything like ours. I think ours is probably... I think ours is probably, I suspect it's probably unique in the United States, the way that we do ours. Because as was mentioned, where, you know, where there's other ad valorem systems, it's usually a single taxing district. And so there's a little bit more equity involved there. But it's frustrating, because whenever we raise this, and, you know, I've only been on the council for a few years, but I get the sense that the MDC's reaction is, you know, to look at us like we've got like an extra eyeball or something, you know, how could you ever propose getting rid of this? And yet, there's no recognition that it's the MDC that's out of, possibly out of compliance with federal regulations, but also not in line with industry best practices. And so I think that's one thing that really jumped out at me in the report. And the final thing, and Madam Mayor, you mentioned it, is the issue of stability. And I think we all went through a very scary period a few years ago, when Hartford was on the edge of bankruptcy. And we all recognized that that would have had a number of impacts on not only Connecticut, but especially the surrounding communities and the inner-ring suburbs in particular. But one special impact that it was going to have on MDC member towns was that, because you essentially had in an eight taxpayer, you know, in a system where there's eight taxpayers, one of those taxpayers wasn't going to be paying their taxes. And so we were all going to end up having to foot the bill for that. And so I'm a little miffed when, you know, I think one of the arguments we hear from the MDC a lot is that a user fee system is less stable, because, you know, there's an additional administrative burden of collecting, you know, all of the fees, and there's a lot that goes into that. But really, it's more stable, because you're sort of spreading that risk out, instead of, under the current system, where there's a risk that, you know, if one town were to go bankrupt, now everybody's got to bear that burden. And there's frankly, no ability to quickly shift to a user fee. And so, you know, I think that going to a user fee is common sense. I think that clearly, somehow, the rest of the country has figured out that that makes the most sense. And I think it's time for the MDC to stop being the outlier on this issue. And so I'm very pleased to be able to support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. Well, clearly, from the comments around the table, we've given this issue a lot of thought. Certainly, the mayor and the town manager and our director, finance and corporation counsel and others, we've been thinking about this issue for a long time. It dates back when I joined the council. But, you know, I think if you listen to the mayor's comments, I, you know, clearly, she spent a lot of time studying these issues, I think it was a history lesson, in the MDC. And so I want to recognize that, and we all appreciate the time that you've spent working on these issues. And, you know, I don't think it goes unnoticed, they may not be, you know, politically popular positions. And so I have quite a bit of respect, the fact that, you know, you would take up the issue on behalf of the town, because it's a very important one, for all the reasons that we've talked about. Clearly, there is an equitable situation that's in place, as it relates to West Hartford residents under this system. And under, heck, at least the last four or five years, probably further back, the annual increases to this ad valorem charge are simply unsustainable. And I think the MDC knows it. And it's also a word that they've used in other contexts with respect to their clean water projects, and the cost of those projects. And of course, one of the reasons why they want to extend that project an additional 30 or so years, because of the burden that all of these costs and fees have placed on the member towns, but are more heavily borne by the residents of West Hartford. So I'm happy we're taking up these issues. The resolution says that we're urging the MDC to continue to evaluate these issues, study them, look at them, come up with a proposal that is more equitable and fair amongst the member towns. And I don't know how that can't be supported. I mean, certainly, from our standpoint, it makes sense. If they're member towns or others, that it's not in their personal interest, financial interest, I understand that, but that doesn't make it inequitable. It makes it equitable that we look at sharing the costs among the member towns. And my final point is, it's really an effort, and it picks up on what Mr. Dodge was saying, it's an effort at shining a light on something that has been, you know, in the back recesses of our town budget and, you know, of our, you know, water and sewer system for way too long. You know, we're actually going to explain how this works, the impact that it has on our budget, and fight to be treated the same as the other users in this system. And I think it's, you know, long past due. And so I look forward to, you know, educating people about what it is, and continuing to evaluate a more fair and equitable system on behalf of the people in our town. So, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes, are you up here? Mr. Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to add my support to this resolution. We all have various strengths of interest on this council, and yours, Madam Mayor, is understanding the intricacies of the way that the MDC operates, and how, for years, and maybe decades now, the way that we have supported the operations of the MDC through this ad valorem system for wastewater management sewage, has been detrimental to our residents. And I think that this is the appropriate mechanism to address the situation by sending to the MDC a resolution outlining our concerns, that's backed up by the study which they commissioned, and selecting the option within that study, which will benefit our residents, as well as the majority of the residents that live in the district. And I think that also speaks volumes, is that your concern about those who have the inability to pay, the low income, the ones on fixed income, those individuals who would be adversely economically affected by this, there could be a provision in there so that they're not worse off by this change in the system. So I think that's really good. The only concern that I have is, we've done resolutions to the MDC before, and sometimes it transmits from here to there, and it just sits in a pile. And I'm certain that that's not your intention, nor the intention of our manager, finance director, corp counsel. So I'm confident that this particular proposal will be heard, be listened to, be evaluated. And I think this should be our minimum ground for moving forward with this particular thing. And if steps are necessary for us to speak to our individual district commissioners, or those from other communities, then we ought to be proactive, reaching out to them to show them the light with respect to how important and how significant this is. Because as the minority leader rightfully has stated, this is unsustainable, and it's been unsustainable for years. And we can't be in the same situation next year, and say the MDC just passed on another 9% increase. Because 9% of, it just keeps getting to be a bigger and bigger number, and people will say, what are you doing about taxes in West Hartford? And we're doing everything that we control, but we don't control the expenditures and the operations of the MDC in terms of their day-to-day operations. So this is very timely, it's necessary, and it's something that we need to definitely stay fine-tuned on, that it's too important to just let sit and let go. That we can't be in the same position next year, saying, jeez, I wish we would have gotten the option C adopted last year. And if we're unable to make the changes from within, by voluntarily asking the MDC to make these changes to the way that the charges are being implemented, then I think that the next logical step would be to seek some type of legislative action from the General Assembly, if necessary. But if we're able to do this within our own operations, as a member of this regional organization, where everyone talks about how important regionalization is, and if that's the model moving forward, then that should be the first step. But if not, then I think we need to partner with those in state government to bring around some change. But in summation, Madam Mayor, you're to be commended for taking this bold step this evening, and using the resources that we have within our own management team to get us to this point, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. David. Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, will be supporting this resolution. And the fact that you took this on like a pit bull, I am just so impressed, because it was at this table where I learned that, oh my God, like, it costs more to flush the toilet in West Hartford than in the other surrounding towns. I think I speak, like most residents, we have no clue what we're paying for. We know we've got good schools, great safety, everything else in the town, but no idea that in our taxes was the cost of flushing our toilet and our sewer. So I just think that you have put this as one of those, I'm going to get this done. And the fact that it is bipartisan, that Republicans, Democrats, we all agree that the system is unfair to the residents of West Hartford, you have spent countless hours at the MDC, at the Capitol, testifying at meetings that I'm sure are not all that entertaining. The sole representative of all of West Hartford, along with Matt Hart, I appreciate you getting up to speed on this issue so quickly. I'm feeling very hopeful about the future, and I applaud all of your efforts, so we're with you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan. So if I end up on the bottom of a river, you guys will... No. No. Mr. Sweeney?
Not really sure how to follow that, but I would also like to applaud you, Madam Mayor. You've taken this on and really dug in on this, and your communication with other municipal leaders in the region, I think is something that is what we're looking, when people talk about regionalization, I think that's what we're talking about, is just cooperation and communication. But I would just point, in the MDC slide deck that is attached to this resolution, I think there's one slide on page 25 that really speaks to the real reason for this. And in there, in this, it shows what equity and inequity looks like. And the resolution speaking to option C really demonstrates that, if considered and done right, you are really demonstrating equity throughout the region, if you just look at the bold numbers. And I think when we talk about regionalization, that's what we're trying to talk about, is equity for everyone, and I think that's what most people try to get to. But if you want to look at just pure evidence here of what equity looks like, everyone's seen that poster of equality and equity, of kids behind a fence, but that's exactly what this is. You have very clearly, everyone basically pitching in the same amount. And that's, I think, what, when the MDC was created, I think that's what inevitably people thought they were creating here, is everyone paying into a water resource that was everybody's, everyone paying into a sewer system that was everyone's, and hoping to save collectively. And I think it's quite clear here, that if you were to move on option C, you would, everyone would be doing pretty well here. Because it is quite clear in the current system, that our town is, without question, taking on more than anyone else. And then if you look at the other slides in regards to how much each individual homeowner is taking on, is also substantial. In some of these cases, we're taking on over $100, $150 to $200 more than other communities, and that's just not fair to the folks that have bought houses here. But I also would just encourage that, you know, we keep an open mind, have a good conversation with our utility. You know, they have done a lot of really good work here. We have the best water in the nation, I think, here. And I think it just, it helps us to have cool, calm, collective conversations like you are having with them to move forward. So I applaud your effort, and just hope that we can continue a productive conversation on this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Dodge?
All right. It's actually just a question for the town manager, and I understand if you're not aware of it. Do we know how the MDC compares to other utility, to others' sewer utilities in terms of actual cost per user? You know, kind of, just if you look at the whole utility, how competitive they are in terms of providing their product?
My sense is, is rates are relatively competitive. I'd be happy to get more detail on that, in terms of the water rates. But on the sanitary sewer side, you know, what we have, as we've been talking about at some length here, is unique for our state and nationally.
The consumer advocate said it was very hard. Matt and I met with, the town manager and I met with the consumer advocate, and said it was, and he is very knowledgeable about utility, and especially water utility. And he said it was very hard to compare sewer costs, for a variety of reasons. But we are working on trying to get some comparisons, just to see, are these costs... And I think it, in a way, it also depends on where you are in your reinvestment in your sewers. So that's another variable that is pretty significant.
Yeah, it's just an idea for, you know, if the MDC, if there was to be any kind of study of another issue. You know, I think it goes to a core issue here, which is just the size of these increases. And I'd be curious whether other sewer utilities have seen increases of the size. I suspect that they probably haven't, because I think that in most other instances, there's more incentive to keep costs under control, I think. And it goes back to what I discussed earlier, and what Mr. Barnes discussed, in terms of transparency and accountability, that there's almost, that there's just very little incentive for the MDC to keep costs under control here. At least, there's not the same incentives there are for an elected body, such as ours, to try and do so. And so I would just, you know, if we could get any other information on that, in terms of how competitive we are, in terms of, you know, the cost of providing sewer services, whether other sewer utilities are seeing similar increases, I'd be very interested to see that information.
So I think Raff Tellis probably could provide some of that information, potentially, when we actually have... I'll follow up with what our follow-up actions are going to be, but, Mr. Winograd, you had something?
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to add to the spirit of our bipartisanship, in that, you know, one of the things that, when you come on council, like sort of the initiation, right, is to find out what an ad valorem is. And that's your kind of mark, that, okay, now you're on council, because now you've got this new weird concept. And what I'm remembering is hearing Denise Hall talk about it rather passionately in opposition. And I'll admit, I was skeptical of her objections, and certainly looked into the tax issues of it as well. And I did have concerns in that long fight against the ad valorem, in terms of economic justice. And was there an impact of changing to a different system, in terms of concern, you know, if, in fact, people who have more money are paying more for the product? Okay, that, you know, it's a more progressive taxation. And in theory, I think that has some value. But as we look at this system, certainly, it's become very apparent, so that it's just not a good system. And to the point of the change in the '70s, there's a reason this is not a good system. It's because of the wrong incentives, that in fact, we should be incentivizing people to use less water. It's a precious resource, a system that doesn't take into account that, is problematic. So I have, despite my initial reluctance to move away from ad valorem, I've been convinced, and I'll give credit back to Denise, for ultimately, it took a little while to convince me of that. And again, particularly, I just want to add, the fact that there is this study, I mean, this was not something that MDC was going to do on their own. But even within their study, and you can be skeptical of their, of studies like this, you think the study is just going to end up with a result that is what the purchaser wants it to be. But in fact, this study came out, I think it's a fair study, and looking into those factors, and taking into account, I think, the interest of sort of, of the entrenched interests of the current system, it still came out and recommended the option C that we are now endorsing. So I think that it is a credit to the system, that in fact, it came up with a fair solution, and I certainly heartily endorse this plan to move people to that fairer system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. I want to thank Mr. O'Leary, he has done incredible amount of work on this for a very, very long time. And the commitment of the town manager really became very familiar very quickly, you know, what do you say? Um... You know, what do you say, um, you know, when you are by fire, you're, you know, inducted by fire or whatever. And also, Mr. Privater, who's not here right now, but he really has committed a lot of time to asking questions. And, and I'm trying to understand this, because it is a big, it has a big impact on our, on our, on our community and our residents. Just an example, you know, a, a person that is, has put kids through school, paid, you know, has a house that they bought that now is well worth a lot more than they, than they bought it for, which is wonderful. But they're using a little, little bit of water, and yet their property taxes are being pushed high because of this system. It's, it's just, it, it actually is infuriating. But, but the other thing that's infuriating is that low-income people in one community do, are recognized as being as low-income, and yes, they're significant low-income. And, and if there is regional support, it should be transparent and open and, and reflected and understood by our residents. But the fact that our low-income people and low-income people, like we all said throughout the district, that there's this inconsistent and lack of a low-income rate is, is also a true unfairness. But with that being said, we are going to send this hopefully adopted resolution to all of the member towns. Our commissioners will get a copy. The MDC administration will also get a copy. There is a user fee meeting at the end of April, which we are going to. We will, we will, we will be attending. One of the concerns was that the final report was truly a final report, and then it would sort of sit on a shelf and then nothing would happen with it. And we're, we're committed to not having that happen. And we hope our other member towns are, are going to do the same. And so we can request some more information and how we can move forward with, with actually finding out all the information to satisfy everybody, but also to, to work towards implementation. So anything further? Okay. With expression, and any further comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion carries. And now I lost my screen.
Sixty?
Six.
I'm way in.
Six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution to receive a donation of two police K-9 and accept an Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to the amount of $10,000 for the purchase of associated equipment.
Motion's been made in a second. And Mr. Hart, would you like to?
Oh, just briefly, Mayor, we're very excited about this, this, this gift here on behalf of the foundation. We'll look forward to recognizing the, the benefactor at a future point in time. But we're, this is a, the K-9 service is a critical component of the Police Department. And we've been short in that regard for a little while now, and looking forward to bolstering our resources here.
I just want to thank the donor for, for doing this really remarkable generous gift, because it does make a, a big difference. So with that, yes, Mr. Winograd?
I'm sorry, I do have, I do have a question on, um, and obviously, it, it's, it's great to have the donation and very appreciative. I do notice in, that we are increasing the number of dogs on a permanent basis. Have we, what is the economic impact long-term? Obviously, the, they're covering the initial purchase and training of the, the third dog. But what is our, on a continuing basis, what are the operating, additional operating costs of, of that program?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a firm number here with me now. I do think they would be quite manageable when the, within the context of, of the larger departmental budget.
And, and I apologize for not having looked through this. Is that a budget item in our, in our budget this year that we, for that training? Was that anything we needed to add?
No. You, you don't need to make a budget adjustment in order to accommodate this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd.
I just clarify, even, and from the public safety meeting, the Police Department actually covers this and accounts for this donation in their budget and talks about it.
Okay, thank you.
It comes ready to go. Am I right? Okay. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Dean, Ms. Carrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution to accept a Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant in the amount of $103,085 for the West Hartford Bicycle Network Shared Route Implementation.
Second. Motion's been made in a second. And Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Mr. McGovern to come up and briefly speak to this item.
Good evening. Mark McGovern, Community Development Director. So the resolution would appropriate funding into the capital budget for $103,000 that we received from the state DOT, a grant application we made some time ago. Took a little while to come through, and it has. What we plan to do is, if you recall, a few years ago, we adopted our bicycle facility plan, and we've been making progress in implementation of both bike lanes and shared routes throughout town when we do paving during the construction season. We'll be able to use these funds to do all of the pavement markings and all the signage related to all of the shared routes throughout town. We hope to be able to get that done by the end of the year. It'll enable us to hire a contractor to be able to do it as quickly as possible. And the only exception would be as it relates to certain areas where we have paving projects, but we hope to be able to implement the entire shared route system in the bicycle facility plan with this grant.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGovern. Great work on this. Any, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Uh, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, Town Manager's report. Ms. Hart?
Thank you, Mayor. You'll find my report here in the board doc system now. Hopefully this works well for you. Short report tonight. We do have some key meetings coming up. One tomorrow night, the Finance and Budget Committee will meet to continue its work on the proposed budget. And if you haven't had a chance as of yet, I would encourage you to look at the backup materials. We've, we have one memo in particular that addresses all of the main issues and questions that the other council committees raised throughout their deliberations. So really would encourage you to look at those materials. And then tomorrow night, we're going to have a presentation as part of the meeting, providing comparable data, how West Hartford, the proposed budget compares to that in, in other towns. And then the town council, you would be looking to adopt a budget for next fiscal year at your next meeting on April 23rd. Moving on to staff reports, we have an important special election for our District 19 State Representative tomorrow, the 16th. The polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And there are only three, only three polling locations for this election. Sedgwick Middle School, Brayburn School, and Hall High School. Moving on, summer job openings. I noted there was some comment today during the public hearing earlier. And we do utilize an open and competitive process to, to fill these jobs. So we're actively recruiting summer staff positions in leisure services as well as other departments. And interested applicants can find information on our website. Next item, last time around, Councilor Williams had asked about our response to fires in the month of March, in particular, the period of time between the 13th and the 21st. I've attached a report prepared by Fire Chief Priest. He can review it in more detail at the next regular meeting of the Public Safety Committee. But the number of on-duty personnel who responded to those incidents ranged from a low of 12 to a high of 24. That was the most significant fire that occurred during that time period. And then our spring yard waste collection program has, it started last week. There are three rounds. The next round will be May 6th through the 10th, and then the third and final round, June 3rd through the 7th. And residents should put their yard waste in the recyclable, the 30-gallon biodegradable bags, put them out by the curb on the same day as their trash collection. And continuing on with the yard waste theme, our Yard Waste and Recycling Center, we have resumed Saturday hours for the season. It's open Saturdays from 8:00 AM till 1:00 PM, and it's open during the week from 7:00 AM to 4:30, Monday through Friday. Residents who use the facility do need to obtain an annual permit. We do have some work going on there, though, some important work. The incinerator tower, as the council knows, is coming down, and we've had to relocate the entrance because of that. But residents can still utilize the facility and will be redesigning, excuse me, after, after the tower comes down, we'll be constructing a new entrance to the facility. That completes my report, Mayor. Happy to take any questions council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions for the town manager? Nope. Okay. With that announcements, food is needed. The West Hartford Food Pantry is especially low on pasta and sauce, canned fruits, applesauce, peanut butter, tuna, cold cereal. Donations may be left in the lobby of Town Hall Friday, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. If you're bringing a large donation, you can call Nancy Stockman, the Food Pantry Coordinator, and get assistance. Vietnamese commemoration of Black Friday will be held on April 28th between 11:00 and 1:00 to commemorate 44 years of exile. The event will be held at the front patio at the main entrance of Town Hall. Everyone is welcome. And I think we also have, these were not on my sheet, but War of the Words is on April 27th. That benefits the Noah Webster House and is a really wonderful event, and I hope you can make it. And the Walk for Haiti, they also have a display at St. Peter Claver. I want to thank Nancy Pelletier for her work on this. It has been a wonderful, actually coordinated project to help display what a house in Haiti looks like and, and how the, how that walk will, will benefit people. So it's a real, actually, a very enlightening exhibit. With that, any other? Mr. Winograd?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two announcements. One is a dinner being hosted by the Connecticut Council for Interreligious Understanding. Please join our honored guest, Reverend Dr. Robert Sellers, recent retired Board Chair of the Parliament of World Religions, at their gala dinner event. Topic responding to a world where hate and violence are no longer surprising, how interfaith organizations can make the world a better place. This is being held on Tuesday, April 30th at 5:30 PM at Congregation Beth Israel, 701 Farmington Avenue in West Hartford. The dinner is $35 a person. Kosher halal food will be provided by the Crown Market, and one can register online at www.ccfiu.org. I'm planning to attend. It looks like an interesting evening. Also, I, people may have noticed that there is a picket lines up at the Stop &amp; Shop stores in West Hartford. We have members of our community who are out staffing those picket lines, the employees of Stop &amp; Shop. They would greatly appreciate any support from, from their neighbors, and would welcome anyone to even come by and, and walk a little bit on the picket line. They are, it's an ongoing event, hopefully will not last very long.
Thank you very much, Mr. Winograd. Mr. Barnes?
You know, to that last comment, Ben, I think that's an entirely inappropriate comment at a, you know, a council meeting. I remember seeing the article in the paper of you picketing a town business, being in the front of the picket line. And I, I just thought to myself, it's not an appropriate place for a council member to be. But then to bring it to the meeting to suggest that we should all picket against a West Hartford local business, you know, family-run business, you know, I just don't think it's appropriate.
Well, we disagree. I certainly, I'll be happy to stand on support of our residents, whatever the event is. This is an event happening, you know, with our neighbors, fighting for a better life.
Are you involved in the contract negotiation?
No, it's not my organization.
Okay.
But I'm certainly staying with them and support them. But again, we, we all have our, the events. I mean, it's not a controversial thing, I wouldn't think. I saw Mayor Bowden actually stood with the people in his town this morning. I was very impressed with him, so.
That's Mayor Bowden. I'm just saying, in our community, I just think it's inappropriate.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. With that, again, I lost my, I have to keep refreshing. Reports from Corporation Council. Mr. O'Leary?
No formal report, no need for executive session.
Thank you. Appointments, I'd like to move, we appoint Howard Duschevsky, appointed to Substance Abuse Prevention Commission. Oh, I should have asked if there are any questions for you, but there's not. Okay, going on to appointments. Do you?
Is there a follow-up on the resolution?
There isn't a follow-up. I am glad that you asked the question. We had a, a, a loss of communications, shall we say, between us and Eversource. And the person at Eversource who was in charge of this was away on vacation. We couldn't find the copy of the easement. Her number two at Eversource sent us what she thought was the final version, but apparently, what I printed out and gave to you, was the original version before we edited it. So I have to go back and, and track down the final version, and that's the version we will use, with of course, appropriate insurance and indemnification.
Good follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Thank you. Okay, now on to appointments. Move Howard Duschevsky, appointed to Substance Abuse Prevention Commission for a term ending 8/31/2018. William Randy Malloy, appointed to Commission on Veterans Affairs for a term ending 12/31/2021. And Ron Van Winkle, reappointed to West Hartford University of Hartford Scholarship Fund for a term ending 12/31/2021. Any other appointments? I know, he doesn't give up. It's great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did you second? Sorry.
I'll second, no.
Okay. All those in favor? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.